Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are present. It was properly posted December one and our prayer and pledge led by District Three today.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our pastor, Bill Search from Crossings Community Church, will actually lead us in our prayer. Bill's been a pastor at Crossings for almost eight years and serves on the teaching team. Before that, he was pastor in California, Wisconsin, Kentucky, and Michigan. Michigan native, who much prefers Oklahoma. He and his wife Karen have three adult children and a son-in-law, who have all made their homes here in Oklahoma. So, thank you to adding to our population.
Pastor, the floor is yours.
Would you stand with me as we pray? Heavenly Father, we recognize that wisdom comes from you. It is a gift. It is not something that is innate to us. We may have some, but you are the provider of discernment, insight. And so, we pray for that. We pray for that in the decisions that are made that affect this community. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for your discernment. Lord, there are many good opportunities and sometimes we must choose between the best amongst the good. And so, give wisdom to choose the very best. Lord, in the small things and in the large things, let's take them with sobriety, with all seriousness. Give us that diligence. We are thankful as a community for those who sit before us on this commission, that give direction, that give up their time and their energies. And so, Lord, would you please bless them? We have come upon a season of blessing. We're entering into a season where we are reminded of the great gifts that you give us through Christ. And so, Lord, let us take you seriously. Let us take this community with great joy and reverence, the gift that you have given us. We pray in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Search, thank you. Mr. Lowe, do you want to jump to eighteen with your guests?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. I have with me today Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and I'd like to read a citation that we have prepared for them. Whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, founded on December fourth nineteen oh six at Cornell University, stands as the first intercollegiate Greek letter fraternity grounded in the values of scholarship, fellowship, and service to all mankind. And whereas the fraternity is distinguished by what is known as the Seven Jewes, established a legacy of leadership and academic excellence that continues to guide the organization today. And whereas Alpha Phi Alpha has cultivated generations of prominent leaders, including civil rights icons and nationally recognized trailblazers, who have advanced justice, education, civic engagement, and community empowerment across the nation and throughout Oklahoma. And whereas the strong presence of and influence of Alpha Phi Alpha within Oklahoma County have contributed significantly to the cultural, educational, and economic advancement of the region, aligning with the county's mission to strengthen communities, expand opportunities, and enhance quality of life for all residents. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners and hereby honors commands Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated for its extraordinary legacy of leadership, scholarship, and service, and for its continued contributions to the residents of Oklahoma County. Dr. Johnson, do you have a few words?
Good morning, all. First, I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Lowe and to the commissioners for giving us this honor. It is truly appreciated by the chapter that's here in Oklahoma City. As Commissioner Lowe said, we were founded on service and a commitment to our community. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure we do is give back to our community. For those of you who don't know, the fraternity, the chapter, actually bought the old Garden Oaks Elementary School, and then we renovated it to turn it into a community center. And since that time, we've had over thirty-five hundred people from Oklahoma City Metro come to the community center to do things such as a senior citizen. We've had STEM camps. We have football teams, Little League football teams that come out there and practice and everything. And that just shows the commitment that we have to Oklahoma City Metro and to our community. So, again, we just want to thank you for this honor. We deeply appreciate it. And it says a lot when the work that we're doing in the community is recognized by an esteemed body. So, again, thank you for this honor, and we deeply appreciate it.
Thank you. You want to make a motion?
Motion to accept resolution, recognizing Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And do you want to photograph?
Yes, that'd be great.
All right, and we have a number of people here for planning. Do you care if we go ahead and jump down so they can go about their day?
Yeah.
Eric, you want to kick us off?
The first item that is up is a plat that is located off of Waterloo Road and County Line Road, very northwest part of the county. The plat is called Four Corners Land, and it's basically a simple lot split is what it boils down to. The property consisted ten acres. He is splitting one lot, which is going to be two acres in size, and the other lot is the remainder of the property. So, this one is pretty straightforward.
Okay, none of the citizens that are here to speak are here about this item, correct?
No, they're, I think it's all.
Okay.
Item thirty.
And the, and the planning commission unanimously approved this item.
I've spoken to the individual that's putting up a garage and such there, so, a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is what everybody's here to discuss. This is a final plat of the Timberline Development, which is located off of Douglas and Waterloo Road. This development consists of approximately eighty-one acres, and there's going to be fifty-eight residential lots in this particular development. They have gone through our process as far as inspections. They paid for the inspections upfront. So, we've been out there throughout the process as far as doing erosion control inspections, inspections in regards to the road. We reviewed the road testing reports. All of that information has come back positive. Have no issues there. I went out on November the fifth to do a walk around with the engineer, one of the owner's representatives, DEQ, and county engineer was out there as well. And so, we took a walk around the development, looked at everything as far as the drainage improvements of the ponds, noted any issues. We sent them a letter within the next couple of days, letting them know the issues that we had as far as things, and then be followed up on during the process over the coming timeframe that we hold the ponds. So, typically, on this type of development, we have an erosion control bond that is held for a year. In this case, it's a cash bond that the developer put up. And then, we have a road bond that is held for two years that the developers put up for this particular development. The issue in this particular case is the planning commission, the day that this meeting took place to approve this item, was a rain event. And so, the planning commission had a little idea of what was going on as far as the erosion control and the water runoff from this particular development. Ms. Serblin, who is here to speak today, she had some preliminary pictures of what was going on at the time. District Three crews were able to go out later that day and even the next day to determine what the overall effects of the storm event was and the water runoff. And so, the planning commission unanimously approved this item. But again, that was before really what we knew what was going on out there. So, what were, the big item that's up for discussion today is water runoff from the northwest pond that's part of this development that runs along Douglas. The engineer is here to speak on that. The developer is here, and I know Ms. Serblin is a property owner that's adjacent to this as well, that would like to speak on this particular item. So, that is all that I have, unless you had any particular questions for me.
Anything you want to say before they speak?
No, I think just allowing the people to speak. And I know that Bill McClung and Randy Snow are also here to speak about what they witnessed when they were out on site, so.
Okay.
One, one thing I just want to mention, since this has occurred, the engineer has been in contact with us. They've sent us some remedies that I've passed on to the county engineer. So, I know they're in the process of reviewing those. There have been discussions with Commissioner Davidson, District Three Road Superintendent, as far as other improvements along the bar ditch along Douglas. So, there are efforts to correct this issue.
Mary Ann?
Yes, you need my address?
No, we have it here.
Okay. Since they started moving dirt on this addition, there has been basically a continuous problem with silt and water runoff. Silting in both the bar ditch in front of their development, my guard ditch, which is to the north, and even onto my property, my front pasture. At one point, when we had that large rain a couple of months back, it was, I think, on a Saturday, started in the evening through the, in the morning. I came out that morning, and I looked at the road, and Mr. Tapp already had a crew out there unloading to clear off the road. But at the time, there was approximately eight to twelve inches of silt, red silt, going across, completely across Douglas from bar ditch to bar ditch. And the length of that was probably twelve feet or more at the, at the, the smallest part. Basically, a small car would not have been able to make a passage on Douglas, a major mile section route. But he did get it, made an effort with a skid loader, eight o'clock that morning, to clear off the silt. There was also in the bar ditch in front, approximately, and I'm guessing I didn't take a measuring tape out there, but approximately eight to twelve, maybe fourteen inches at spots. The silt was that much above the road level. So, it was later that he got in there with a skid loader and had it removed. But the bar ditch, it's not very deep. It has not been deep. I have been living, living at my place for forty-two years. But that was undisturbed ground for all that time. And that bar ditch, it's, it's just basically kind of flat. It only goes down a couple of inches. When they've opened that, okay, they did the, the retention pond, that pond. And when it comes down off of a large area, and they've changed, basically, the lay of the land, and understanding this is on a steep hill. Okay, from my house to the road, which is in the middle of my property, it drops thirty, forty feet to the road. There's a significant change in elevation. So, when they have changed the lay of the land, opened up a large amount of land on that, not doing the erosion control that was needed, whether their engineers said it need, this is okay, it was insignificant. It was not sufficient for the situation. It has gotten a little bit better. We don't have quite that. But the other day, when I was leaving to go to the planning commission meeting, there was a, I would say a heavy downpour. Nothing abnormal, just regular heavy downpour. And I went, came out of my driveway, and I had my camera with me on my phone, and I took pictures while it was raining, and some of those pictures you have in front of you. Basically, the, the water was just coming straight out of the retention detention pond. Okay, there's like a little cup there at my property. I had him, and I have to thank Mr. Tapp and his staff, that when they dug it out, they left like a little berm, about twelve-inch berm, between my place and where the, coming, the outlet coming out of the pond. Prior to that, water was coming across in the front of my pasture, going across my pasture to my front fence, and then down the culvert that goes under ducts.
Can I just ask you, what would you like to see as the outcome?
Okay. What I would like to see, I'd like to see basically no more silting of the bar ditch or mine or my property.
Okay.
That's the goal, is to prevent that.
All right. Let's let the other two speak and then see what the commissioner's staff has to say.
Okay.
If you need to talk some more, we'll bring you back up, okay? Jim? Or either one?
Jim Tapp, forty-seven twenty-one East Second Avenue, Oklahoma. I came basically to be here to answer any questions that you all might have. But having said that, we've worked with Mary Ann over a year, as you know. And what I, I would just like to point out a couple of quick things, and that is, I think Mary Ann kind of did my job for me. And when she said to you all that we had a heavy event, this is referring to something in March, and she came out that morning, Mr. Tapp's crews were already there. What I want you all to know is that we take what we do very, very serious, and we're there before there is a problem. And I think your staff, whether it be inspections from a very detailed punch list that we've completed in full, or whether it be being responsive to any questions that Mr. Brandt has had throughout the process, I hope you will find that, and, and Mary Ann also said, I'd like to thank Mr. Tapp later in her comments about leaving the little berm so that we didn't get seeds under our property. We've been very delicate. We take it very serious. I've talked to Mary Ann six times in the last week, and we'll continue to do that. But I hope your staff will tell you, we've been very responsive. We're there before there is a problem, just like it's been, you know, reiterated. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them for me.
Okay. Kendall?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. So, I was a project engineer working with Mr. Tapp. And as Eric mentioned, this is a final plat that mimics the master development plan in the PUD, the general plat, the preliminary plat, so everything's identical. I think everything's fine. I think the only thing that's of any issue is obviously this detention pond in that northwest corner. If you look at the design of it, the design of the pond is in accordance with your drainage criteria. It, it works. It functions on paper. There's different methodologies that can and can't be used. But the recommended methodology that your drainage ordinance require or establishes is what we use. And it shows that the pond, everything functions, it meets that criteria. That being said, I do think there was an existing condition, even under existing conditions, that there's a capacity issue in that bar ditch. It is compounded by the fact that there has been silt that's been discharged into that ditch throughout construction. We've tried to maintain it. It needs to be redug again. So, what we've committed to the, to you all, is that we're going to regrade that ditch. Now, here comes the sticky part, is it's statutory right of way, so we feel like that we have a right to access and to do that. It's in the frontage of Ms. Serblin's property, so she's very particular about what she wants. So, we're working hard to try to meet some of her criteria, but still yet get that ditch dug. Once that ditch is dug and has the depth at our northwest corner, it's going to function. But in addition to that, what we've also done to help try to alleviate any concerns, is we've used a different methodology to analyze the existing pond, and we've designed another outlet structure that would reduce even less water from the pond than what's allowed today or, or is designed today. So, those two things are going to certainly make it work. So, we're committed to making sure the bar ditch gets dug. We'll modify the outlet. We'll work. We submitted a report before Thanksgiving, it sounds like, from Eric, maybe. Stacy, you've got a couple comments, but we'll certainly work with you on something acceptable with, with that. So, that being the case, don't, let's don't lose sight of the fact that we put up, in this case, a fifty thousand dollar bond to make sure that that ditch gets dug out, as well as the other roads control measures. So, we certainly, at this point, we're committed to making sure everybody's happy with it. We would like to see this plat move forward. And like I say, you got the erosion control bond, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have in mind.
I'd just like to see maybe a second weir instead of the plate.
I, I think.
Take the energy out of the water.
Yeah, so, we can visit about that. But from what I understood with Eric, I don't think we have any issue with that. So, I think we can certainly accommodate you on that.
That's great. But I mean, all questions I had, you've already explained them all and answered all of them. So, that's, that's excellent. Bill, do you have anything on top of that? Have you, I know you've spoken with them, and Randy, you guys have been out there and seen it all, and I've been out there and seen it.
I'll just say that we went out and looked at it, and there are definitely some erosion issues out there, not just on the northwest corner, but on the southwest corner too, where that big outlet is, you know, under the road. There's like an eight-foot or ten-foot ten horn down there. And there's a lot of silt that's built up down there in the bottom. There's no, no retention pond there either. So, I don't know if that is going to be a problem in the future, but that's something we'll probably be able to take a look at. The retention pond he's talking about up on the northwest corner is not functioning properly, I don't think. Because it's, it shows to be a retention pond, but there's no water in it. And so, I think what you're talking about, that another weir up there to slow down that water and keep the, keep the, the erosion down some would be, would be a good solution.
Yeah, Eric. So, it, it's not a retention pond. It's purely a detention pond. So, it does, it's not designed to stand water. It just will restrict it. But nonetheless, points taken. We use the SCS method, which is what establishes by your code. Everybody uses it. But when it comes to small basins, my opinion is, I, I think it's the wrong method. But that's what we've redone under a method that we have chosen. So, we'll modify that outlet, and like I say, it'll restrict that flow even more.
Okay.
That's, that's really all I had.
Okay, that's great. Eric, is there anything that we should do? Just to prove pending these changes?
I mean, all of these, all of these developments, since I've been with the county, which has been twenty-some years now, there's, there's always some issue. And I think in this particular case, the only reason this issue's been brought up is because it's so close to Douglas, which is completely understandable. Most of these subdivisions, if we have issues, there are ponds that are further in the middle of the section, so it's not something that you would normally catch. What we do as far as staff and as part of the bonding of these type of projects, is we go out there on a quarterly basis to make sure that these are functioning properly. We always will send the developer or his staff an email with follow-up pictures, with a follow, follow-up recommendations of, you need to look at X, Y, or Z to correct this, or A, B, and C is working properly, continue to do that. So, my point is, is that these are like living organisms. There's, depending on the amount of rain we get, the rain events, there's always going to be some issue. And also, these developments are designed in a hundred-year storm event. So, all the rain that we had back at the beginning of this year, there were, there were problems all over the place. So, I just want to kind of put it in perspective that they've done what we've asked, you know, from bonding capacity. Sure, there's issues, but they've worked with us on the other issues in the past. So, for whatever, that's where, that's kind of what we, what we've dealt with.
I appreciate you, Mr. Tapp, and I, I, I really appreciate the sensitivity of the situation and everything that you guys are doing to alleviate the issues. I really, really appreciate that. So, with that, and their willingness to alleviate the issues and fix those, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say, Mary Ann?
Yes, I'm willing to work with them. Let's work together. That's what I've been saying from the beginning. If we can get this here solved, I have no issue with them continuing on with the next phase of their development and the development process. There, let's just work together. Let's get this water issue solved. And we work together. I think we can work together. We have talked. And hopefully, this will solve the problem. If not, maybe we need to tweak things a little bit. But as long as we can tweak things to solve the problem, I'm good.
I appreciate your spirit of cooperation. Okay. If there's no other discussion, is there all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody for coming down. And again, thanks for, this is the way that all of them should be, everybody working together. I wish they were all this easy. Thank you.
Sheriff, we always make you wait till the end. Do you want to go ahead, set your next item up, and then we'll go to the forefront of the agenda?
Objection. It's just Jim.
Uh, no, so, this is a pretty easy one. I've spoke to Mr. Barnes, and he has no, no issue allowing Andrea the access she's asking for, just to streamline any future, anytime we have a tornado or flood or anything. There's things that we, we can do to get reimbursement, and just makes it easier.
Excellent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, going back to item one, is there a motion to approve the minutes of November nineteenth?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the reoccurring items, is there a motion to approve the plates?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation on the bid?
Good morning. This is for P two-six-one-two-zero-dash-eleven. This is for the Behavioral Care Center Services Operator. Requests for proposals were sent out to registered vendors, as well as multiple other online platforms and national groups seeking proposals for Behavioral Care Center operator. We received three ultimately from Coke, Inc., Creoaks Mental Health Services, and First Class Healthcare. On October eighth, this board established an evaluation committee to review and evaluate those proposals. And on December seventh, twenty-twenty-five, interviews were conducted with all three firms and all members of the evaluation committee present. What I am fixing to read next is a summary based off of their notes and their inputs. It's been reviewed and approved by all the evaluation committee members. And I'll start with, upon completion of interviews with all three firms, one firm clearly distinguished itself from the others. Creoaks Health Services received unanimous support from all five evaluation committee members, and that's reflected in the scoring results. The firm's proposal demonstrated exceptional initiative in depth, including direct engagement with the facility serving as the model for this project, comprehensive research on the anticipated benefits of the Behavioral Care Center, and proactive identification of potential challenges requiring and proactive identification of potential challenges requiring localized solutions for Oklahoma residents. While several pro programmatic and operational details for the Behavioral Care Center remain under development, the evaluation committee determined that Cree Oaks Health Services ultimately presents the highest likelihood of successful implementation. Based on that, its proven history, demonstrated capacity, and subject matter expertise, it is the unanimous recommendation of the evaluation committee that Cree Oaks Health Services be selected as the most qualified proposal to support the establishment and operation of the Behavioral Care Center.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the recommendations of the committee to sign contract or inter nego uh contract negotiations with the Cree Oaks.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any change to the blanket?
No changes. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the blanket?
Motion to approve the blanket.
Commissioner Davidson, thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any individual consideration on the consent docket? If not, is there a motion for everything?
Move items five through sixteen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. District one.
Morning, Commissioners. First up, number seventeen, we have a sub recipient addendum for our recipient northeast of Palm City Renaissance. It'll be an increase of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. So it's going from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, three eighty. You get the picture. So we ask for a motion to increase funding for Northeast Renaissance offer funding.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You've done item eighteen, so nineteen.
Number nineteen is a letter regarding the notice of termination of ARPA project three zero three eight nine Spencer Library Project. To date, Spencer has expended zero funds allocated. Spencer's efforts to raise additional funds to complete the project has fallen through. Given the recent audit findings from the state auditor, we believe that pulling these funds back is in the best interest of District One and the county as a whole. We've also been assured by a censure that the ARPA funds that were allocated to them are sitting in a separate account. And we don't have any evidence of that. And so we're asking that the, we authorize the chairman to sign a letter of termination. It's also worth noting that Spencer has already been notified that this is coming.
Okay, that was my question. No surprises here, right?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to terminate offer funding in Spencer.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ryan. Item twenty is to finally appoint a new appointee for the District Two slot. This has been a long time coming because we have been diligently looking for someone to serve. And then after we've asked several people to serve, their employer did not allow them to serve. So I appreciate not only Ms. Ashley Robinson agreeing to serve, but that she works for the Children's Center in Bethany, and that they have agreed that it's not a problem for her employment that she serves. So a big thank you to the Children's Center. And I believe she will be our youngest trustee in history, but in spite of that expansive board experience, so I think she will be in addition and an asset to your team, Commissioner Davidson. So if there are no questions, her bio is attached, I will move her approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you for that. District three.
Yes, this is to sign application for ETR funds for three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. This is in response to the March floods, and this will be used to reimburse and construct a new bridge in several areas. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next is the ninety, this is a an interesting project. Logan County has asked our road crew to come educate them, if you will, about how to use concrete slurry and some other methods that we're doing in our road construction. They're paying us ninety thousand dollars, a hundred percent reimbursement, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And item twenty-three, this is FEMA, our Federal Emergency Relief Project. These are more funds from the flooding that'll be used on Indian Radian at a what do you call that, a covert battery to fix that, so. Yeah. This is the reimbursement for that that we've already fixed, so. Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jessica.
Good morning. This is a resolution for the Oklahoma County Information Technology Council. This was established back in two thousand thirteen, but nothing really had come from the development of that. And so we are amending it in order to name the MIS Director as the chairman of the council as an ex officio member and non-voting member. And so we have, at the last budget board meeting, went ahead and appointed the primary and alternate. And so this is just approval in order to reestablish the resolution. And then the following agenda items are for the Commissioners' offices for their primary and secondary appointees.
Okay. Motion to approve items twenty-four through twenty-seven, twenty-four being the amendment, and twenty-five to name Joe Blau as primary, John Pettis as alternate, twenty-six is Randy Martins as primary, and Katie Arata as alternate. And for District Three, and item twenty-seven is Kimberly Zudy as primary and Paul Foster as alternate. There we go.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
I don't know if that was quicker, but.
Thank you.
Engineering, Stacy.
For the last three years, you've had an agreement with the State Fire Marshal for us being the authority having jurisdiction over those inspections. That's now expired. This is a document to renew for the next three years. Oklahoma County being authority having jurisdiction. State Fire Marshal Office trusts us to do that. I think they're still underfunded and can't do every county in the state, so.
Just a reminder, though, the State Fire Marshal will be responsible for jail.
That's a separate statute, and he still keeps the new jail.
Excellent. More oversight. Motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the planning commission is done, and now Commissioner comments District One.
I would like to express my condolences to Judge Stuhl. He passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was a judge in Lubin County, a good man, actually my law school classmate. And I just want to express my condolences to his family.
Sorry. No, thank you.
Congratulations to Lee Sanders, who's going to be our new head of Civil Division here for the District Attorney's Office. We appreciate your service. Is there a motion to recess into executive session? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.